So call the meeting to order and could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Doherty? Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mr. Pulowski?
Present.
Dean Fagan, present. Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. Demello?
Present.
Mr. Martin?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Souza?
Did you call me? I'm sorry, my speaker keeps shutting off.
Jeff, you're present, right? Air O'Connell.
Present. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's update, Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I will walk the committee through our EMOC protocol. I'll have Mr. Barata comment on the education portion along with Judy Mulrooney, our Director of Special Education. We'll talk about meals and operations. And Mrs. Moynihan and Mrs. Perry will provide some insight regarding meals and operations. And we'll talk about compensation and communication. We'll have Marguerite Mitchell and Brenda also add some insight there. So I'll get things started with education. So we have moved from our enrichment platform to our remote learning platform. I can say that a lot of our time has been consumed meeting with our principals and also meeting with our union leaders. So I know just the leadership team alone, we've held three, four meetings with our principals to make sure they understand the complexities involved with our remote learning plan. The TEA had building level meetings with all their members yesterday and on, sorry, on Sunday. They had building level meetings with all their administrators. And what's nice is that, I'm sorry, all their teachers, all their members. What's nice is that we're sharing the same communications. So we developed a power that the TEA has used and that I have used and the principals are using to communicate the remote learning platform to all our educators so that therefore the messaging is consistent. Also, principals have held a faculty meeting yesterday from nine to 10 with all their teachers. And they're scheduled to have another meeting tomorrow to make sure everyone is in a good place and to provide those who need additional support with additional support, to put them in contact with individuals who can support them. So I will say that yesterday, Mrs. Blinow mentioned that we had over 200 teachers. So a third of our staff participated in the remote learning PD or the co-planning opportunities that we had scheduled yesterday, which I think is standing. And then regarding our remote learning plan, I know we only sent out a letter so far. I do plan on creating a public service announcement where I'm going to walk the public through the PowerPoint and also send out a robo-call to let our families know what's going on with our remote learning plan. But then to review the memo and also to be on the lookout for the video that I'll be creating with Mr. Jakes, who doesn't know that yet. But Steve, you're working on a video with me tomorrow. So that's what we have going on regarding education. Judy and Chris, anything you'd like to add, please?
From the special education point of view, we've worked on two things this week. IEP progress reports, and that was how teachers can complete them and distribute them. And we've been working on a protocol so that we can begin to hold virtual team meetings. We hope to get that up and running sometime next week. We're still getting advisories from Desi, and we have a meeting with Desi tomorrow at 11:00. That's it.
Thank you, Judy. Mr. Barata, anything you'd like to provide as far as an update regarding education?
Sure. As Mr. Cabral already mentioned, we had unbelievable turnout for professional development. Yesterday, with over 200 of our educators taking part in that. Part of that professional development was homegrown talent, our own teachers providing the professional development through live sessions along with what Carolyn Blinow scheduled in there, fixed, company-made professional development opportunities, which can be viewed at any particular time that fit the schedules of all of our educators. On our student perspective side, this week, myself, the curriculum coordinators, along with instructional coaches, have been developing next week's packets to go out for all students K through four. Along very, very well. And some of that information has been shared by the instructional coaches back to the buildings with their staff members, with the other colleagues. And a sense of relief, I guess you'd say, has laid out across the buildings because they understand now that what's going to go out is high-quality packets, not very much in-depth, but very much high-quality, which will allow the educators implement as they move forward. So I think we're on a really good front like that. I've worked with Kathy Perry. We're going to develop a great strategy to deliver these packets out to the buildings. We've gotten tubs that we're going to place out at every site, our meal sites, grade levels, K, 1, 2, 3, and 4, to make it easier for parents just to pick up rather than have to sort through multiple packets. So we're streamlining that process. Another professional development opportunity that's in the works, as I mentioned it last week, is for our educational assistance in conjunction with the May Institute and University of Connecticut. They're going to be afforded the opportunity to participate in a five-workshop series on PBIS, which I think will benefit not only our educational assistance, but the students once we reengage those again. That's it for now in terms of the educational component, Mr. Cabral.
Sorry, I was on mute there. Mrs. Doherty?
So do you want to wait until all of the presentation is done and then questions or each section?
I prefer to go through the entire section.
Okay, all right. I'll come back to a question on the educational component. Thank you, Mayor.
So continuing right along, so very proud to announce that we have added two new locations where we're providing breakfast and lunch to our students. So the two new locations are Letty Preschool and also Hots Four Corners. And again, we also are working collaboratively with the city to receive large donations. I believe we received two large donations from local food distributors that we have used to provide meals to some of our families. And as well as to, a large portion of the donation has been sent to our daily bread. Where members throughout the community can access the food being donated to the city of time. So, and I'll just go over operations real quick, and then Kathy and Brenda can add their pieces regarding meals and operations. As I mentioned, we have, for these next two weeks, we have begun pulling back on the number of staff members that we have out and about in the public. So we are stressing and emphasizing to staff to work remotely as much as possible. In the event someone does need to go into the office, including myself, we are going in. We are performing the tasks we need to perform. We are taking what we need to take home with us. And we are working from home as much as possible. We are also working with our staff to make sure that they have the resources, the technology that they need at home to be able to work remotely successfully. So as, again, we're learning this, we don't have a playbook on how to do this. So as matters or problems get brought to our attention, we are addressing them so that we can ensure that staff can perform their duties at home just as well as they would if they were in the office. And regarding our custodians, again, we've been pulling back on our custodians. They've been doing checks on their schools in addition to doing cleaning in the schools. And we also have our groundskeepers checking our grounds. And this week, if you do get any angry calls from the public, we did close the gate to the main driveway heading into Oakland, the Oakland Educational Complex. There's a gate near the concession stand that we have locked because we discovered that large groups of young adults were driving out back and hanging out. So we're trying to make it as difficult for people that want to gather to gather at our facilities. So that's why we have closed the gates and chained up all our facilities to prevent people from utilizing our grounds. So with that said, I'll open it up to Brenda and Kathy. So if there's anything you want to add regarding meals, operation, and compensation? Kathy?
So as far as the meals, yes, we had, actually, it was pretty successful. Our, on Monday, we began with our two new sites, and Letty had 37 families over there, which I thought was really good for the first time, and we're watching those numbers increase. So we're going to stick with those two for now. And if we feel as though we need to add a third site in addition to that, so that would give us a total of 11, we'll do that. But for now, we're going to see how these two go. As far as, one of the things we had talked about last week was the guidance page for Taunton High School in regards to the seniors. So we have that up and running on the main page. So when you have a chance, please take a look at it. One quick thing I will say is that tomorrow, Thursday, at April 9th, at 1 o'clock, they'll be having a live chat with seniors and their parents and guardians. And they will be able to talk about college financial aid and scholarships. So that was one of the things that we had mentioned.
Can you please check to see how long it will be to commute and get the dog?
That's okay, Brenda.
Sorry.
That's all right. And so the other part of operations we talked about last week was also the contact with families and reaching out to families. We continue to make gains, great gains in that. A lot of, Mr. Mattos personally made a lot of phone calls, and I think that enabled a lot of parents to be able to say what they needed. In many cases, it was some technology. So we've been able to provide them with that. We also have now a master Google Doc with students. It's not open to the public, obviously, but it's to my assistants and myself and to the principals. And it's a living document. So we'll be able to talk about, able to pinpoint the attempts that we've made to reach out to families. And that number is getting smaller and smaller. So I'll have a definitive number for you within the next couple of days. But I think we were up a little over 200, and now we're down around 100. So we'll continue working diligently on that. I want to give the teachers a huge shout out. The teachers have been contacting parents on Facebook, phone calls, email, Dojo, Remind App, Google Chat. They've really, there's been no stone unturned. So I give the teachers a great deal of credit for that. And that's what I have.
Thank you, Kathy. Mrs. Moynihan?
You have said quite a bit of it, Mr. Cabral. But yes, our groundskeepers are doing daily checks of all the buildings outside perimeters and making sure that our perimeters are secured, so people are not taking any, they're taking precautions, of course, doing the social distancing and not gathering on our playgrounds. Custodians do reach out if they do need anything, if, to continue with their, to checking on their site. Compensation is continuing this week. It's just a smaller payroll, working with my staff to see how they are doing to run their first payroll remotely. So that'll be fun to see. Overall, things are going very, very well.
Thank you. And then the last piece, again, on communication. We do plan on creating a public service announcement video that'll go over the remote learning plan with Mr. Jakes. We do plan on issuing another robo-call to our family to be on the lookout for the PSA and also providing some small detail, again, trying to keep it short and sweet regarding the remote learning plan and where they can access information regarding the remote learning plan and how we are highly encouraging everyone to take advantage of these remote learning opportunities. So again, we understand and realize that everyone's family situation is unique. Everyone's capacity and ability to educate their children remotely is different. But we want to make sure that everyone is taking advantage of these opportunities. And the only other things I'll mention regarding communication that'll be coming forward in the near future is we are working with Mr. Mattos and his staff regarding grading and what that'll look like at the high school. So there's been a lot of communication on the list server I'm on. So we're getting different samples of how high schools are addressing grading. So we will look at that and we'll develop something that we feel makes sense for the Taunton Public Schools based on the best practices that we are seeing out there from other high schools and other superintendents. And then the topic of high school graduation has come up. And again, nothing at this stage regarding canceling graduation. But I have told Mr. Mattos, I think it's time that we start looking at alternatives in the event we have to record the dignitaries giving the speeches and possibly doing a montage of all the seniors going across the stage. Or maybe we do a montage of their faces, their high school senior portrait. And maybe have all their accolades listed with the college they plan on attending or what they're going to be doing after graduation. We can do something creative along those lines, again, utilizing the services of Mr. Jakes and his talented department. So that's what I have for you. Marguerite, I apologize. I didn't give you a chance to offer anything on communications. Anything you'd like to add that I missed?
The only other thing that I've also been doing some work on this week, John, as you know, is developing guidelines and norms around virtual conferencing with families, whether that's by video or telephone. So we know that that's very helpful for our staff to be utilizing. And we are working on getting something developed that will certainly be something that everyone supports. So we hope to have that out very shortly.
Yeah, and what we pictured that looking like will be before a child logs on, they'll read a disclaimer saying that by clicking or by signing in, you are saying that you will adhere to the guidelines of the practices that we are saying as far as how to best utilize this technology. We're also thinking about possibly, if we can, run a ticket on the bottom of the screen reminding about best practices when utilizing these Zoom or these Google Chat Room platforms. So we're trying to get this communication out there to make sure that students and staff, one, to protect our staff, and also to make sure students understand that they're expected to behave in a certain way at all times when on these remote learning. So that concludes my report at this time. That's what we've been working on. I'll have my next superintendent's meeting with Commissioner Riley on 4/16, which is next Thursday. I will mute myself at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have several questions. I'll ask a couple of them, and then maybe somebody else might ask the same questions, and I'll come back to them. So I noticed that on the document that we received this week, it says, "Remote blended learning." What were you thinking? I can only imagine what you were thinking, Mr. Cabral, but blended, how are you conceptualizing that?
Yeah, all really that blended means is we are providing learning opportunities that cover a multitude of platforms. So there's online platforms, the paper packets. There's real-life experiences that the teachers could ask the kids to access or to perform at home. And then one example would be for, say, a kindergarten class. The teacher may ask the child to go around their home and identify certain shapes in their home. Or to maybe go out, physical education teachers may ask students to go outside and perform some activities. So blended learning will cover a wide range of activities that students can do utilizing whatever means they have at home. So as I listed on the cover of our PowerPoint to our principals, it's about equity and access. That we want to make sure that wherever we're developing for our students, that they can access it in multiple forms, whether it's a phone call, whether it's paper and pencil, or whether it's on a platform supported by, that they can access via a Chromebook. That's what the term blended learning, blended remote learning means.
Thank you. If I might, um, I think that one of the, all of this is a concern certainly to families and students. But one of the greatest concerns is the issue of equity when it comes to special populations, special needs students, EL students, at-risk students. So I would throw you, Madam Mayor, to Mrs. Mulrooney. Is there any insight that you can provide, and I'm sure you can, to how you're instructing your staff to work with special needs students particularly?
Yeah, so before Judy answers that, I'll just chime in, and Judy, you can add any additional information. So as part of our remote working plan that we negotiate, impact bargaining with the TEA, one of the things that we acknowledge and we recognize, and the TEA recognizes, is that our special educators will most likely, will more than likely be more involved with their students than a traditional classroom teacher. We anticipate that there'll be more frequent communication. There'll be more adapt, there'll be adaptations to the work that we're putting together, that the teachers are putting together. And we anticipate that there'll be some opportunities for small group instruction, where the special educator may work with the groups either on a teleconference or a Google Chat-type conference. So we see the special educators, know their role being slightly different in the sense that they may, they probably will require more engagement with the students and the families. Judy, anything you'd like to add that I may have missed?
Educators, though, to collaborate with the gen ed teachers, with the related service providers.
Margaret Judy, could you start over? I had you muted on this day. Could you start over?
I agree with everything that you said, Mr. Cabral. But we are encouraging our special educators to collaborate with all of their colleagues, the gen ed teachers, the related service providers, building principals, to provide the support that the students need. And we are encouraging co-planning, so trying to bring some of their expertise into the lesson to help the teachers plan, or their expertise into a related service to help provide the support the students need.
And my last question, Madam Mayor, for the moment, is that I heard this week that the legislature adopted a measure to go forward with MCAS. Have you gotten instruction from the Department of Education yet on how that would look?
I have not, Mrs. Doherty. The only, the only news I received was the ELA, MCAS for 10th grade. And I believe the middle school ELA was postponed or canceled. I have not received new guidance regarding MCAS in the future. But I do know the commissioner was waiting. I know the federal government issued that it would waive it for the year. But it's in Massachusetts. It has to go before the legislature, and then it would go to the commissioner. And I know the commissioner is ready to exercise his authority if he is awarded that authority.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Pulowski, I believe you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I have four questions. So first, for Mr. Cabral. So I, the EMOC protocols and the communications have been awesome. They're very thorough. They have a lot of information in there. They show all the work that we've been doing. But I think maybe for the benefit of some of our parents, I'm wondering if we could put out maybe a top-five bulleted list of things to know, like, you know, for instance, remote learning starting on April 13th. Because I think sometimes a lot of the good details might get lost. And, you know, the same way that we get to differentiate to all of our students for the different ways that they learn, might help to have differentiated instruction to the parents. So is that something you think that we could do?
Actually, that's the reasoning behind my PSA and my robo-call. So when I do the robo-call, I want to make sure that the meat of our EMOC communications gets emphasized to the 10,000-plus phone calls that'll be made. And then when we do the PSA, it'll be a video that'll go into that type of detail. And then obviously, we can summarize it in a shorter memo if need be. So I think the PSA that I'll work on, Mr. Jakes, and a robo-call will help to emphasize the key components. And we can also capture it in a document.
Perfect, thank you. Second question, if I may. I believe it was mentioned in one of the protocols, but I just wanted a little bit of clarification. For the schooling that occurred up until March 13th, when we shut down, are we, again, have teachers complete report cards and progress reports? And do we have an idea when those will be made available to parents?
Judy, do you mind covering the progress?
So the IEP progress reports are being completed up until the date of closure. And those are being sent to the parents.
Thank you, Judy. And then regarding report cards, Mr. Pulowski, we are still working out the details on report cards. We did close or we did freeze all the grades. And Mr. Barata and I, as well as our principals, will work out a system and how we report those grades out to the students in the elementary, middle school. High school will be a little tricky because I believe the high school is about to start quarter three, or trimester three, sorry. So I, or quarter three. I'd have to check with Mr. Barata on the high school. I believe the high school's going to be a little trick, a little more complicated than the elementary and middle. But we did freeze those grades.
Okay, but bottom line is you're working on it, and it will happen in one way, shape, or form. Perfect, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping that once we get this remote learning platform up and running and in the hands of our principals and teachers, that that'll provide the leadership team with the opportunity to start working on these other questions that fall outside of EMOC.
Excellent. My third question was pretty much already answered by Mrs. Perry. So I just wanted to know about the uncontacted students. So it sounds like we're making progress with that. That's great. I've definitely been hearing from folks at the high school. A lot of people who surprisingly were not contacted and still didn't know about Chromebooks and all that. In fact, I showed the list to my son, Jack, and three of his friends were on the list. He has texted them and told them that they need to contact their A-Block teachers. So awesome, very good progress on that. And then my fourth and final issue is, so once we roll out the remote learning, starting on the 13th, I know that we've offered PD to the teachers now. But I'm wondering, how will we be assessing and coaching our teachers as they go along with this new method of teaching? Because it's not going to be easy for everybody. It's going to be new to a lot of people. How do we make sure that we are able to assess what everybody's doing and coach them and make sure that we're sharing best practices and improving as we go along?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Pulowski. So during our impact bargaining with the TEA, one of the things that, again, both sides agreed to, and I think I've said it enough, philosophically, we came at it from exactly the same perspective. So what we've done with the TEA is we're going to have our first GELMET, Joint Labor Management Committee meeting on the 17th, where we'll assess from an administrative perspective what's working, what's not working. And obviously, the teachers will bring to us their concerns regarding what's working and what's not working. Then we're going to, as we have, collaborate and put together thoughtful plans that we can carry out with fidelity during this remote learning time, or during this extended school closure. So that's what we've committed to doing with our teachers, and they've committed to doing with us.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pulowski. Mr. Demello, and then Mrs. Fagan?
Thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know the input from our teachers is very critical. Do we have some type of student input, if it's working or not on the student end? Do we have class representatives from each grade level? That could be a voice for the students in their particular grade level to give us feedback?
We haven't engaged students regarding feedback or input regarding the remote learning plan. But we, I mean, we won't know until next week, once it's up and running. The feedback I've been receiving, for the most part, from parents regarding our enrichment opportunities has been very positive. I've shared those emails with our principals. I can start sharing those with you if you'd like. I've only received a couple of concerns from parents. One was a high school concern that I shared with Mr. Mattos. He's addressing that with the parent. And the other one was an elementary concern, which the principal has addressed with the parent. But as far as engaging students for input, I have not. But what I can tell you from my middle school student and from a high school student, that their teachers are reaching out to them, the work that they are being asked to do is meaningful, and it's just the right balance. But I've only seen one student on Twitter who posted that they weren't going to do any of this work because they're getting more hours at Trukey's and they'd rather be working. So I have a call into that family to encourage that student to maybe work a few less hours at Trukey's and participate on these remote learning opportunities.
Right. I mean, and the reason I brought it up is we don't want, for example, someone to say, "Well, I'm not a online learning student. That's not what I signed up for. I do better in a classroom, engaging in a classroom." So again, whatever feedback we can hear from students, I think is critical. I know it's going to be tough to change on the spot, but some feedback is also critical, I think. Thank you.
I will say this, Mr. Demello. I'm doing a, you guys all know our friend Hector Aponte, who's on DECA. He's part of the high school advisory. So Hector has asked to do a weekly interview on Zoom with me on Saturdays. And we'll ask Hector to be the voice of the students. So if he's getting any concerns, he can share that with me, and then we can address him as a leadership team, too. That'll be one way for us to get some student input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demello. Okay, Mrs. Fagan, then Mr. Martin, and then Mrs. Almeida.
Hi. Kathy Perry, I have a question for you. You said you were dropping off meals at Hots Four Corners?
So the-
Dropping off meals at Hots Four Corners, we are distributing meals at Hots Four Corners.
Distributing where? Well, there's four corners there, so where are you?
So near the taco.
On the side with, the side with the Taco Bell and the side with the Domino's and the Cumberland Farms on that side of Hots Four Corners, the new plaza.
So did you, did you like advertise that prior to that? I mean, are there just people, I don't know how you get the word out where you are. That's what I wanted to know. Right.
Communication that went out last week, and we also have it on our website. And Madam Mayor has also posted it on D-Cam channel as well. So we did do our best to get it out publicly, and I will add it to my robo-call tomorrow that we have two new sites.
Okay, and I want to comment on the, how difficult it is to do things at home. I think for a lot of kids, it's a distraction being at home. So even when you sit there with a Chromebook and you try to do something, they're not used to that style of learning. I know my granddaughter, who's a seventh grader, retrieved- I know my granddaughter, who's a seventh grader at Freedman, was sitting there with, with one of the Chromebooks. And doing math, but you know, she's sitting on the floor and that's what she likes to do, but she's watching all these different videos to try to learn math. And, and those kids aren't really used to that. So I, I don't know how successful a program this is going to be, but it's such a radical change from what they're used to. So I hope people understand that. I, I think the whole point of this is trying to maintain the level that they're at, not necessarily teach them a whole lot of new stuff. It's just trying to do, it's a maintenance thing. It's, it's odd that we're having this conversation. I have the television on and muted, but a thing went across the bottom. That Oregon has become the 13th state. They're just canceling out the school year. I wanted to know, Mr. Cabral, what your idea is on the prospects that that might also happen here? Because it seems like this is an awful lot of effort here. We're all going to be back to school in three weeks.
So let me answer the first part of your question. So we, with the union. Agree that this is new for students and new for families. So as part of our remote learning plan, we built in office hours for students to call their teachers or to email their teachers. And if they need help, if they're stuck, they can work it through or work it out with their teacher during the set office hours. And that's also available for parents if they're struggling to access the curriculum or they need assistance delivering the curriculum or the learning opportunities to their students. So the office hours, I think, will help address that concern, Mrs. Fagan. And then the second question, we are planning for the best and planning for the worst. So we are planning to be back on May 4th. In our remote learning plan, as Mr. Barado is working with the curriculum coordinators and our instructional coaches, we're going to map out weekly themes between now and the end of the year. And we're going, that's how we're going to go about this. We're going to be planning every, every couple of weeks, putting packets together and giving our staff know. Themes or topics that they can plan around in the event that this goes beyond May 4th. So we are planning for the best case and planning for the worst case.
They're still planning on May 4th?
We are planning on returning on May 4th unless we hear otherwise.
It's just hard to believe that when we, when we started this whole thing, there were less than 100 in cases. And the state now we're up to over 15,000. And I can see a lot of parents who probably say, hey, they're not going to school. And I don't know how you're going to deal with that. I, I can just see the apprehension that some people have about that because you don't know where everybody has been. And that's always what's been at the heart of this.
And I, and I will say, as this committee has, we'll make, we'll make our decisions based on the latest information we have and based on the guidance from our local and state health officials. And we'll do everything in our means to make sure that we're providing our students and staff with safe. Sanitized facilities. And I'm sure there'll be guidance around what activities we can and can't hold during the school day. And so again, we're planning for the best and planning for the worst.
The thing about the sanitizing though, I saw in the paper today, they closed Cumberland Farms because a couple of the workers had the virus. And they're sanitizing the whole thing. The problem is, as soon as you open it up to the public, you're introducing something else. So I, I just. I think this is going to be very difficult, but I just want the community to understand that this is very different for kids. As I was watching her, I said, what do you feel about this? She said, well, I'm trying to do it, Grandma, but you know, it's, it's not the same. It's not the same as being in a classroom and the design that they've been used to. So I, I hope it works out. And I hope we can at least sustain the kids. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, and the piece that I believe is most important in all this, the remote learning opportunities, they are very important. Don't get me wrong. But what is absolutely a must and a non-negotiable is maintaining that contact and that communication with our students. That is key to making sure that when we do go back, we can return to a sense of normalcy. Our community, and I'll give the mayor a shout out, our community needs us more than ever now. So anything that we can do to engage our students and engage our families is, that to me is top priority. And whatever learning we can accomplish in the meantime, that's a bonus.
Okay, thank you.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Cabral. And I know that the city and the school department is working very hard at doing those things and I think pretty successfully. And people really appreciate the engagement. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Martin was next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to go back to what Mrs. Fagan said about remote learning. I have two classes at Bridgewater that I'm remote, having remote classes with. And my Monday class at eight o'clock. I had about 15 students on it, but no one could hear me. Not one person in the, in the class. And the reason I'm saying that is because when my nine o'clock class came on, they could all hear me. So what happened during eight o'clock class versus the nine o'clock class, I have no idea. But anyway, what I do with those classes is when I have a class, I follow them up immediately sometime later that morning with what we did that class. What I expect them to do, and if they have any questions, to email me back. So we not only communicate remotely, but we communicate through emails. The second thing I just wanted to mention, Mr. Cabral, you talked about closing the gate at Freedman and Chamberlain. I'm assuming police and fire have access to that gate.
We added a lockbox with keys and they are aware how to access the lockbox.
Good. I figured that would be what you'd do. I just wanted to be sure. And the last thing is, how was Mulcahy going?
I'll defer to Mrs. Monahan that she had a construction meeting today.
As of right now, we do get a weekly progress from Agostini. Right now, the thing that is holding us back is the carpenter. As you may be aware, the carpenters have left construction site. So although the carpenters are not on the construction site, there are other personnel working on in the school. So right now, we're hoping to keep going. We're hoping to make up for lost time. I did ask the question, are we still on for the June date? And they did say, listen, we're going to work towards that. And if we have to work overtime and all these other times, we will do that. But as of right now, we're going to keep on plugging along and just hope for the best.
And I believe we're about 70% completion, Mrs. Monahan, or is it a little less than 70%?
I'm not too, too sure. We didn't say the exact percentage. That wasn't discussed today, so I don't really want to confirm that. I'm not sure.
Can I have a follow up on that?
The last time we had a meeting, we were 67% complete, so 70 would sound reasonable.
Yeah, I, I believe that's correct. I was at that meeting, so I think it was 68-ish, maybe 70%.
Thank you.
So, so are you all set, Mr. Martin?
I am. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm sorry, I did have Mrs. Almeida next, but Mr. Sousa, did you?
I'll ask it when you come to me after, Mrs. Almeida. Thank you. Put me in if you can. Thank you.
Mrs. Almeida, and then. David. Okay, you are on.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions. So. It goes back to what Mr. Barado had, I was talking about before. Now, these packets that are going out to the students, are they only on the food sites or they're at the schools also?
I can start to answer that from Mr. Barado. So we are offering them at the food sites. And we also have put the packets online. And we've broken them down to smaller chunks. In the event families want to print them off, they don't have to print off 40 pages. They can print off sections at a time. So at the food sites and they're online. And we, and any, any hardships, they've reached out to the principals and we've been working directly with those families to make sure they have access to the materials.
Okay, and my other question is, what about the seventh graders that are going into the high school? Are they being contacted so they can get their schedules for next year? Or is that going to be put off till like June or July?
No, a good. Yeah, good, good question. So that's actually been, that was actually work that we discussed with the TEA during impact bargaining, what would be the role of the guidance counselor? And that was one of the tasks that we identified, was scheduling our seventh graders into the high school as eighth graders. So that'll be work that they will be doing between now and when we return to school.
So that's going to start on the 13th?
If I could, if I could add in there, the scheduling has been ongoing with the middle school guidance counselors. Providing input for that. What they're working on now is the electives that the. Will take. So there's going to be outreach again about whether or not they use a Google Doc or have our middle school guidance counselors confirm with the families and students which electives those rising eighth graders will have. At the high school level, they've pretty much, for the most part, have their core areas set. Again, they're worried or their, their focus of attention, I should say, is on electives, eight to nine and 10 to 11. And they've created a Google Doc to go out to the, the students and such coordinated with the guidance to give them options to help facilitate that scheduling process. So it's, it's, it's an ongoing work of progress.
Okay. So basically, what I wanted to know was, is are the seventh graders going to have their schedule before the end of the school year? Is it going to be going all through the summer also?
I'm sorry, Maddie's in the middle of her tap dance. I'm having a hard time hearing. Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I just had to put my dog out because she was driving me crazy.
Yeah, put Maddie outside.
My question is, so the seventh graders have already kind of started to get their schedules for next year, except for their electives. Will this be done before the end of June or is it going to be done all through the summer?
I don't want to overpromise, so let me get back to this, let me get back to the board with that next Wednesday after we've had a chance.
That's fine. That's fine. And I've been reading a lot on what school districts are doing and those kinds of things. And some of the things that have come down, and I'm sure we've all gotten letters from MASC and the items that have been online and so forth. And I don't know, maybe I read wrong or I'm reading what I want to read, but I thought there. Weren't going to be any grades per se for this. Portion from the time the students were out of school, that everything was going to be kind of like a pass fail type of thing.
You are, you are. For this remote learning period.
Yep.
We are, we have discussed with Mr. Matos in particular, because we feel this will impact the high school most, credit. Credit, no, credit, no credit is what we've discussed.
Okay.
Again, as long as a student is trying to the best of their ability. Right? We want to make sure that they're not punished and we want to make sure that they're, that they're taking advantage. We don't want to disenfranchise students. Because they're doing this work remotely and they're being told, you know, that they're getting bad grades or that they're failing. We want to make sure that students, no matter how they're performing, remain engaged and they're taking advantage of those office hours. If they need something to be repeated or something to be, they need something re-learned.
Okay, so, and to fall back on Mr. Pulaski's question about the grades. I understand the high school is a little different because of the way that the block scheduling and when they started the trimester, however they do the semesters. But the elementary school and the middle schools, their grades were almost closed the week that we stopped school.
Correct. And we have.
So how come those grades aren't done yet?
Well. The reason, the reason being is some staff use School Brains and some staff do not use School Brains. So really, the staff that have the new School Brains, how do we collect their grades?
Okay. I, I understand that. Okay, so. But as far as the third semester, because what are we going into now? Fourth semester now, right? Because the K through middle schools, we're in their third semester, correct?
Correct.
All right, so up to. Grades and for this last semester will be pass fail.
Good. We have grades up through March 13th. Whatever grades we had in School Brains, we were able to freeze those grades.
Yeah.
And archive them. So we have those grades.
Okay, and so the ones that haven't been put in School Brains, how are we going to get them so the report cards can go out?
Yeah, that'll be a workaround that will work with our IT department and our union to make sure that staff have a way to put those grades into School Brains.
Because the semester really was closed the end of that week.
I believe so.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was, that's what was on the school calendar. So that should have been. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
While we're on that topic, if I could, if I could just mention, in case somebody was wondering or asking. We have also, we are also preparing our kindergarten registration documents. So we're preparing packets that we'll distribute at the meal sites. And we're also going to create a portal online for parents to complete some entry level information. And then we can collect all the rest of the documents once we are able to meet with, meet with the public. So we've actually started that work as well, the kindergarten registration.
All right, and one more question now that you said that about kindergarten. What about the babies that are, and this is probably to you and Judy. You know, when they're three years old, they start school because of their IEPs. How are we handling that with the, with the babies?
So we're still waiting for some direction on what to do with the three-year-olds. Actually, we're meeting tomorrow with the state and we're hoping that they're going to give us some direction. One of the suggestions has been that we could follow the plan if it was a student who was in early intervention and bring that into. The building if we weren't able to evaluate, but we're hoping to get more clarification on that tomorrow.
That's the term I wanted, early intervention, and I couldn't remember it. I think I'm starting to lose my mind from being alone too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mrs. Almeida, I may have to go for a, come over for a haircut, so stand by. You may have company one of these days. Mr. Cabral, I just have a couple of items here. First of all, I want to follow back up on the Mulcahy issue with you and Mrs. Monahan. We didn't get the backstory. Some of the, the rest of us that don't go to the meetings. So are you saying that the carpenters' union has left the job site because they just, they determined that it's better for them not to be there? Is that what the deal is?
Because of the way the carpenters were working in close proximity and the way they were traveling to the job site in close proximity. The carpenters' union made the decision. Issued a, issued a notice that they were going to pull their workers off the sites, not just our site, sites throughout the state.
Yeah. Okay, just, just.
Work taking place on site. I drove by.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I drove by yesterday and I could, I saw a bulldozer moving some loom around over on Tremont Street. So there's still work taking place on site where the contractors can work utilizing social distancing.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer. The next item is. Especially at the high school, maybe at the middle and elementary, is on the ancillary subjects, the arts and bad music and all the other ones. Are we doing it? Believe me, I totally understand, of course, subjects is where we need to be. But is there any blended learning in plans to incorporate some of those in the blended learning?
Yeah, actually, great question, Mr. Sousa, because that was an item that we spent a lot of time just impact bargaining with the TEA. That even if the high, so let's use the high school for example, because they're on four blocks. One of those blocks would be dedicated to the arts, but there are 2,700 students in the high school. So we wanted to make sure that even if you didn't have a block for a special, that we built in enrichment opportunities for students to participate in. So when I send you the PowerPoint, you will see actual examples of schedules. And you'll see some of the arts activities that we, that we put in place for students to do in addition to their academics. Can't hear you, Mr. Sousa. Your mic is not functioning.
All right, how's that? Better? Technology, technology works great when you, when you know how to use it. That's, that's great news. You know, I'm always wondering about the high school because, believe me, that's. That's our crown jewel and we want to make sure those kids get what they need moving up there. And hopefully, the little guys and the other guys get some, get some things too. I appreciate that answer. That's, that's good. And the last thing. April, April school vacation. Are we going to, we talked about it. Now, wouldn't today, today, what's your recommendation on that?
Well, thank you. Actually, we've, we've heard from five of the six unions have gotten back to us regarding. The possibility of canceling April vacation. And five of the six that we've heard back from have supported it. The only group we haven't heard back from yet have been the cafeteria workers. But we did hear from the groups that they would support canceling April vacation. I believe it makes sense to cancel April vacation as we roll out our remote learning platform next week. To have one week of remote learning, then take a week off and pick up the following week, doesn't really add to continuity. So I would be in favor of canceling April vacation. In, in addition, those four days would count as part of the four to five days we have to make up. So officially, our last day of school would be June 17th. And obviously, we know what school is like in June or what the buildings are like in June. They're very hot. They're not very conducive to learning at that time. So my recommendation would be that we cancel April vacation and utilize those four days as part of the four days we have to make up at the end of the year.
Anyway, so we need an official vote from this committee, correct? Because it's our, our calendar?
Correct. You set the calendar.
So I'm. So, uh, I'm, I'm so moved that we cancel April vacation per the administration's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Doherty. Uh, you're on mute, Mrs. Doherty.
Um, regarding the cafeteria workers, they obviously are the folks who are preparing the meals for our youngsters. Assuming that we'll continue to provide meals. How, how does that fit in terms of canceling? They usually have the time off, but they're going to be on deck in that regard, right?
Yeah, so we have language in the cafeteria contract for banquet, uh, duties. So we would apply the banquet language and they would prepare and deliver the meals utilizing that. So they would receive compensation for that. Because it falls outside their daily scope of work.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
You know, I should, I should also note that we do have two holidays coming up. So April 10th, there is no school, Good Friday. And April 20th, which is Patriots Day, there would be no school. So it would be two long weekends built in the families and staff uh, during this remote learning closure. But we would be in session, we would be in remote session the 21st, the 22nd, the 23rd, and 24th of April. And I'll make sure that gets communicated to the public, uh, this evening and tomorrow ASAP.
Thank you. Mr. Sousa?
Yeah, quick question. Uh, I guess it's our discussion for the April vacation. It has to do with the holidays. So.
Your mic just went out, David. Your mic went out, David. Your mic went out, David.
Speaker probably went out too.
From the beginning, David, fix your mic.
Okay, I got two buttons here I pushed. Uh, so the April vacation, we got the cafeteria's very making the meals. What about the two holidays? I'm assuming those are holidays. Everyone's off, so the kids won't get a meal on that day. Is that correct?
Correct. No food on the holidays. We're going to double up for the weekend. So kids will have extra food.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, so there was a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So voted?
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so I think we're moving on to see if everyone is all set.
No.
No, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fiori. You're way down the bottom here. I apologize.
Now, the logistics for me are kind of difficult because I am at work at Pro Home and my desk is such that it's a little difficult to get to the camera. I'm wondering, are we getting any feedback that going to a pass fail system is going to complicate any college admissions that may have already been offered?
Sorry, I have not received any feedback yet. If anything, I've been hearing about students being accepted into colleges over the last few weeks, which has been some positive news, but I'll check with Mr. Mattos and I'll ask Mr. Barata to check with Ms. Andrews uh, to see if they've received any fight feedback from, uh, universities regarding this credit, no credit.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are doing it themselves. Uh, Heidi's a bit concerned that most of BU has gone past. Think she's going to need to have a letter grade to, uh, get her ordination. So she's trying to fight something within the school of theology. So I didn't know if, if kids with high school getting into universities are having a similar issue.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. So that's definitely a blind spot that we don't want to lose sight of. And I see Mr. Barata making notes. So we'll make sure that we check with the high school on that as well.
Divine intervention, Mr. Fiori.
Thank you, Mr. Fiori. Okay, anyone else? Uh, Mrs. Fagan?
Hi.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. It says I'm still muted by the host. Is that you, John? I'm all set. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to say something. I noticed that Nate had, had put something out on the chat about his daughter and her. I didn't know you had one in seventh grade till my granddaughter's in seventh grade. She told me she's already got her courses. So that, that alleviates the fears for anybody that, I guess they've been in the process of doing that. She knows what she's taking for next year, just like yours. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anything else? Okay, so we're moving on to critical items, not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Uh, Mr. Sousa?
If that's the case, then I just want to, thank you, Madam Mayor. If that's the case, everyone, I just want to get, get us set up for the next meeting, which will be a regular, uh, regular meeting will be at 6:30 and we'll have finance and law at, Brenda, where are you? You still here? Oh, there you are. Um, are we opening bids next meeting?
Yes, we have two bids to open.
Do we need to start? 6:15 still okay?
I think it should be fine.
No, we lost you again, David. Nope.
I'm sorry. Thank you, everyone. 6:15 for finance and 6:30 for the regular meeting. Thank you. I'm going to mute myself. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you. Um, do we need a motion to allow the, uh, allow Brenda to open up all the bids? Um, at the meeting?
I don't think.
Seeing we're going to be remote.
No, I don't think it would hurt to have it officially on record.
And then refer them to administration? Because normally when you open up bids, it's open to the public. And how is the public going to be able to accept, access the bid openings?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. Something, something we could do at finance, John, right at the beginning of finance. Also, too, we'll need the legal language that Brenda's going to have from the, uh, she's got some legal language we're going to need to read out too, aren't we?
Yeah, and we can also, we can discuss, so we can read out the numbers, the bottom line total on the, during the meeting with the bid that's, that's brought to our attention.
Allow Brenda to open them because normally the subcommittee opens them and they won't have to meet. So Brenda could do it remotely with the, uh, subcommittee and then read them off. And that way there, if anybody in the public wants to access it, they'll be able to know what the quotes were at that time.
Right. The way our home offices are set up now, we do have the ability to scan. So if somebody did request the bid documents or the summary sheets, we could scan it to them from our home offices. So we're pretty much almost like fully functioning, except for having a copier in my office. It's like being, in my home, it's like being, it's like being in my home office with this, the way we have our station set up.
Great. So do you need a motion from the full committee to allow her to do that? Is my question.
I'll make that a motion.
Just a minute, just a minute. Um, Mr. Martin has something.
I just have a question, Brenda. How many, what bids are we opening?
Um, hold on one second. I'll let you know. I know there are two food services, so if you could just give me a second.
I'm getting a headache from all this tap dancing over here. Oh my goodness.
I can't hear it.
So while Brenda's looking for that document, uh, if I may, uh, with, with the group entertained my idea that next Wednesday, we all make a positive sign that we can share with our constituents. So if everyone just took an eight by 11 sheet of paper and just wrote a positive message, we can start the meeting by having a positive message to the community. Would everyone be okay with that? Would an eight and 11 or another paper you can find at home? Just a positive sign to our constituents, to our kids. Okay?
So that's a reminder.
Great idea.
Read the motion.
Brenda?
Yes, two bid openings are going to be, the first one will be cafeteria supplies, which is produce, and then cafeteria grease trap maintenance.
It's for those. We don't usually have a lot of vendors bidding on those items, do we?
No, usually it's like NASA fruit. Um, there's a group in town in veggies that has bid in the past. I know for veggies would be like three or four the most. And for grease traps, we're lucky if we get two or three.
I'm going to throw this out there. I don't think we need to do it, but could we notify the? Yeah.
You froze up, Mr. Martin. Joe, your, your mic and your video froze.
I think we're losing them.
I think he's back.
I'm back.
Okay.
Says my connection again is unstable. The, what I said was, if we only have a handful of, uh, vendors bidding, do we want to send a, uh, a note to them saying that they could join the meeting via Zoom, uh, for the opening of the bids? Again, that's just a thought.
My only concern would be, uh, being Zoom bombed. That would be my only concern if we get the password and everything out there.
No, it would just be for those vendors.
Those vendors. Yeah, we could invite them to fi, to just the finance and law.
Just the finance and law.
Yeah, we, we could do, yeah, if it's just a finance and law, we can offer them the courtesy if they want to participate. How's that?
Just to keep it above board that, you know, we're doing things as open as we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that is part of the motion. That would be nice.
Okay. I think, Mr. Fiori, did you have something? Are you all set?
No, I, I had made the motion. Uh, well, for discussion on it, I, I would just ask, I think Brenda should physically open them, but I think the committee should at least have the critical documents to validate it, shown to us on screen. Uh, I, we can't, we can't be there with the, the letter openers, but, uh, if we could at least see the bid bond and the uh, anti collusion and the signatures and so forth, uh, I'd want that, but, uh, otherwise I think it'd be done remotely.
Mr. Jakes, you'd probably put those documents up on the screen, right?
I'm thinking what we, what we would have to do would either be to show them physically on the screen or we could scan them and then do a, uh, screen share.
I, I'd say just show them because it'd take too long to add to.
Yeah.
Scanning.
Okay. You're only looking for signatures, collusion, uh, bid bond and, uh, taxes.
That's right. The collusion. That's all.
That's all. She can just show us those very quickly.
Okay.
Alright.
Mrs. Doherty, did you have something?
Just on your, thank you, Madam Mayor. On the PSA, will that be posted on the TPS website so that we're all privy to that?
You're on mute, Mr. Cabral.
Alright. Still getting used to this. Uh, the one that I'm going to be working on, Mr. Jakes? Yes, I do plan to put that on chat.
Point of information, there's a motion on the floor. This is a different question.
Of course. We need to vote on the motion to open the bids.
Yeah.
Brenda opened a bid.
Okay, uh, Mr. DeMello?
Uh, I'd like to make of the motion to please consider if we could, uh, allow the bidders to be on Zoom for that limited time period of finance and law.
Included.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fiori, could you just repeat the motion so everyone's clear?
Motion is to allow Mrs. Monahan to be deputized to open the bids and display them to the members of the committee for review and that, uh, bidders be allowed to participate via Zoom.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So voted. Thank you. Um, Mrs. Doherty, did you now want to continue?
Yes, thank you. Uh, asked the superintendent uh, about whether or not the PSA, how you're delivering the PSA and how are the school committee members going to be made privy to that?
Yeah, so we, we plan to utilize all our social media platforms as well as the Taunton Education Network and YouTube. And I can also, so you'll, you'll have access to it that way.
And you're providing us with a PowerPoint presentation before?
I will email you the PowerPoint that I shared with principals and the TEA after this meeting.
Good, thank you. Uh, thank you very much. And I, I'm sure you're going to emphasize the they or somewhere in your presentation to the community that, um, their expectation to have this learning experience be the same as a regular classroom is not an expectation that we can meet and that things are just different. And so the delivery, the expectation of the teachers, the work of the students is different than it has been. I think that that's important. Um, I thought that your model timeline or schedule for the day was really, uh, very positive. I think that it gives families and students, uh, a way to look at that day so that it's more structured perhaps than it is now. So thank you for doing that. And lastly, Madam Mayor, a shout out to all of our staff, um, up and down the line for doing all of this hard work. So thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty. Okay, anything else under items not anticipated? Okay, and there is no press time? So.
Motion to adjourn.
Back again.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe, everybody.
Everyone, stay safe, please.
Stay safe. Bye.